Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Berlin Boylston Regional School Committee Budget and Facilities Subcommittee Meeting to order. Alright, let me just get my agenda. I think today we are just gonna review what we are going to present Berlin with per their request and for our meeting we have with them next Wednesday, right Nancy?
Yes.
Alright, so what time is that meeting and did we get an invitation?
Yeah, it was in that letter, so it's at seven thirty.
Okay, seven thirty on the third.
Town Hall.
Okay.
Yep, December thirteenth.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, so they had requested a few items and we are able to provide, some of them were able to provide, some we are not, so Nancy you
Yeah, so.
Working on that, so go ahead.
I'm working on it, it's still work on pro- in progress. But I thought I'd briefly touch, just so we're all on the same page. One of the things I'm, the main things I'm working on is, is the above level service items, which the school committee has always seen. I'm just working on in breaking it out just for their town only. I'm just about complete. The main unknown at this time is we're still in negotiations with our sub, with our support groups, our paraprofessionals, custodians, administrative support. We're coming up with grids for the next three years and working with them, so it's nothing in stone yet, nothing's been agreed upon, so it's still in negotiation status. But the rest of the stuff I do have put together and before we meet with them, I can, I'll send it out to you. To, um, so we all have it before the meeting, so that's one thing that I'm gonna be reviewing with them. The next is a four-year revenue and expense look back from fiscal year twenty to twenty-three. Working on that, it's a little more difficult than I thought it would be, just getting used to the system. But I'll have it done in time. You have to do it separately in this system, I'm used to a system where you could just kind of press button and it would load it all together. This one doesn't work that way, which is fine, I just, I just gotta put it all together with a little more than I thought. And then the fiscal year twenty-three actuals, which that is done, because that was presented to you when we closed out the year. So they'll get what the school committee reviewed when we closed out the year for fiscal year twenty-three. So those are the three things we'll be giving them on Wednesday night.
Alright, so on, we don't have their agenda, I'm just wondering, is this meeting just us presenting that information or is this like their regularly scheduled FinCom meeting and we're just like an item on their agenda? Or do we, we don't have any information on that, do we?
We don't, but, so I kind of been tuning into their FinCom meetings just to kind of get a read on things.
Yep.
And I think it's just us, because they wanted to a lot more time for the schools. Um, I'm not definite on that, but I think that's where they were leaning when I was listening, I can try to pull it.
I can't.
I'm doing that right now.
So who's the chair, Julie, who's the chair of Berlin FinCom?
Schultz.
I believe it's Mr. Schultz.
Yeah.
Unless they appointed somebody else.
Okay, I can send an email to him as like the chair of the school committee and just say, hi, we're planning to have representation at your meeting on the thirteenth, you know, we want to respond to your letter. You know, we can attend from seven thirty to eight thirty, so you know, we just want to make sure that's at that, we're on your agenda for that point in time, is that gonna work? You know, something like that, I just don't know, I know in the past we've shown up and we're like later on the agenda, we have to wait, so I just want to be proactive so that we we're not sitting there all night, or if they're like, oh no, we're not going on till eight thirty, fine, then at least we know.
Nancy, I just, and I don't mean to interrupt you Megan, but I, I just went on to their website, make sure in the right direction here. I have Board of Finance Agenda Packet for the twelfth.
Well, that's our meeting, we can't go that night.
Well done.
Yeah, so.
Let me just double check the letter.
So I just want to make sure that we.
Says budget meeting on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven thirty PM.
So to your question Megan, it sounds like it's a separate meeting for us requested unless they made an error on the date themselves, but.
I'll reach out to Mr. Schultz and get some clarification, and then didn't, um, somebody else sign that letter, Ms.?
Uh, Keith.
Keith. Ms. Keith, yep, so I can email both of them.
Yeah.
And just get some more information and let them know that we're planning to attend this meeting and, um, but we won't have a quorum, it'll be Julie and myself, who's the bud- represents the budget subcommittee and, um, just get some more information so we know specifically what the conversation is gonna entail, especially since we just did this forum a couple of weeks ago and, um, we presented our numbers and we can let them know, you know, we still don't have any finals right now, nothing has been voted on, so.
Right.
We can't really say a lot, we don't really have a lot to talk about at this point, but we can explain to them that, you know, we, we gave them our initial estimate and we, we don't see a lot of wiggle room in that.
Yep.
How much over the two point five is it?
What Julie?
How much over the two point five is it? What's the percentage nine?
I don't know. I have to look at it.
It was like close to nine or ten percent Julie.
I want to say it's ten percent, but then we did take a couple of things out.
But it's not voted on budget yet, so like to your point, this committee could say, no, we're putting that stuff back in, we don't have the take on the committee, so it's really hard.
And, and, and the two point five is two point five of the levy. So we don't even know what the levy amount is, so that's, I don't even know how to answer that part, I can pretty much just give them the increase. I think it's around ten percent, that's where we were, but I, I didn't look at it specifically for their town only, so that's what I want to do. Because the ten, the ten percent was combined, I don't know if it's gonna come out even or not.
Yeah, they'll ask you that.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, but we had told them, I mean, they had asked in that letter and we had told them in per budget workshop, we had learned, we just, we can give an extremely rough estimate of that at this point.
Yeah.
But like we could have, you know.
We're still.
Five out of district placements or we could have, you know, the boiler breaks or the roof starts leaking again, and we're like, oh no, we need a, like, we have no idea.
Right.
At this point in time, the school committee has not voted on anything, that's not on the agenda to vote, so it's good to have these initial conversations. But I remember last year sitting at that meeting for like three or four hours and I just, you know, we're, we're never, I wanna, I want us to be upfront and transparent with them, but I don't want at, at some point in time, we gotta just draw the line in the sand and say, okay, this is your position, this is our position. You know, we respectfully disagree, I don't want to sit back and forth and argue for three hours like we did last year. I just don't find that to be productive, so, and, and like we said, we're doing the best we can, but it's December. We do not have a school committee voted on budget, so we cannot give them solid numbers, we can certainly give prior year data. And I think that's the point we need to make, so it's great that they're having this meeting and Berlin is proactive, but I don't know, Julie, you have anything to add about that?
Well, I'll just add this, um, because I'm also on the rec committee, is that they ask every municipal committee, including the school, to give their budget requests by, you know, November thirtieth or the very beginning of December, um, and they include the school in that too. So I think that, yeah, well, we, we don't have, like, our rec committee has already voted our approved budget, because we can do that, because our expenses are fixed, they're not like the schools. And I think that the finance committee understands that this year a little bit better than they did in the past. But I think they're just trying to get very rough, rough numbers on things like that we, that we really know, right, sure, could it increase astronomically? Yes, it could. But they, I think, just want to know, like, give us the very basic of what you know, I think that's what they're kind of looking to get ahead on, so they can start doing some work on their end as well, but I agree back and forth, but Megan, I think a lot of that back and forth was, nobody really knew.
Yes.
No, they didn't know, there was a lot of people not knowing, and I think we're a lot more ahead of the game, I think budget cycles are tough, everybody's, you know, wants for their departments, um, but there's only so much money to give, right? Schools a little different, because we set our budget versus the towns where, you know, I can come in as a rec committee member and say, this is what we wrote on, this is what we like to have, but they can say, we're not giving you twenty-three thousand, you're getting twelve, because that's what meets them, but for the schools, we go to town floor on it, so, but I think they're just looking for, give us something, so we know, are we starting way far behind or are we looking okay?
Yeah, we can give them, um, a rough preliminary, the above level service. There, there's been some changes since we had the town meeting and we can give them that. We can't.
Forum meeting.
New, I think that's one of the mistakes we made last year, I mean, you know, and I think we learned as we have gone along and we're not gonna do it again, we'll give the revenue once we know what the revenue is, just.
Yep.
So they'll, they'll be able to get an idea.
And I think it's also important to let them know too, that we do do it later, because we don't know, like we learned in that training, it's better to keep it as far out as you can, so that we have good accurate figures on that revenue, so we're not guessing it out.
Yeah.
Right.
You know.
Alright, so that's good, yeah, so it sounds like you'll be prepared for that, we'll plan to go, I mean, if there's anyone else on the committee that wants to attend, you know, if Lisa wanted to, to attend or if Mike felt that he wanted to attend, I'll mention that in the budget subcommittee overview on Tuesday night.
Make sure you got, we post it.
If we have a quorum, we have to post it, right? So, uh, I'll just, if they want to attend, if we have more than, if like Lisa and Mike both want to attend, then we'd have to post it, right?
I thought three is a quorum.
No.
Four.
What meeting are you referring to Megan?
Finance committee.
The meeting on, like if Mike and Lisa want to attend, if they want to come.
Oh, 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 yeah, I understand, yes.
Yeah, so like if we, if Mike and Lisa are like, yes, I want, because they're both Berlin residents, so we'll say, um, I don't think that's gonna be the case. Alright, so that sounds good, so yeah, Nancy, if you, uh, are, so are, what are you, are you gonna plan to present that on Tuesday? To the committee or no?
Honestly, I wasn't going to, because it's really nothing that you haven't seen, I'm just in a format just to the town of Berlin only.
Okay.
So I really wasn't, um, because it's nothing new.
But I'll, yeah, yeah. Go ahead, sorry, would you be able to provide what we want to bring to Berlin with us, if we were bringing any, any kind of documentation that to, to, to us ahead of time? Are you bring, are we bringing any paperwork with us?
Oh, I'm, I plan to share it with everybody before, is that why you're asking?
Yeah, I am.
Absolutely, I just gotta put some fine tuning in on it.
Yeah, yeah, not right.
I hope to have it done by Monday.
Excellent, yeah, that's, until we have a chance to review.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need it ahead of time, I agree, it's all gonna, it's mostly historical data, that's gonna be spreadsheets, it's nothing that we need to vote on, it's just and stuff that they're looking for, alright, that's good.
Okay.
Alright, so did anyone else have anything else to say on that topic? No. Okay, so, um, the next thing I have on this agenda is this shared use agreement, which we talked about earlier this morning. Um, so Nancy, I don't know if Dan has filled you in on all of this, I feel like, or Carol has filled you in on what we're gonna be asking?
A, a little. Yes.
Julie, do you want to like give Nancy like the five second update to loop her in on this?
Sure, um, as you know, the, well, speak specifically about elementary schools, BES and BMS have attached to their buildings, a gymnasium, um, that is separate from the school side, the door is locked to get into the school, so it's completely separate, um, and prior to this, at least in Berlin, we were never, the basketball program managed the, um, open and close of the building and the cleaning of the building and volunteer based. Policy says you have to have a janitor in there the whole time, so now we've sort of worked out an agreement with the janitor to open and close the buildings, because for Berlin, we're in there like nine to seven on Saturdays and eleven to five on Sundays, because we don't have another gym in, in the town, that's our youth gym. So we started, I, I started kind of thinking, um, you know, when these schools were, well, at least Berlin Memorial, because I know BES is a lot older, but a lot of, um, communities have what's called a shared use agreement with their parks and recs department. And what that is, it's a, it's a really thoughtful, um, document that allows when school is not in session, these parks and rec organizations to oversee those, um, spaces. And that can be outdoor as well, it doesn't have to be specific to indoor. And the, the, you know, the purpose behind this is to promote, um, health and wellness for, for your whole community. If you have this beautiful gym space where, you know, what, why would you not be using it, let's maximize our facilities for, for our community members that pay taxes for these buildings, right? So we're trying to have, figure out a way, sort of, everything sort of imploded here at the same time with the door locking and the janitors and the programs and the rec. So we're trying to figure out, how can we achieve this, right, how can we meet the needs of the school, and when school's in session, obviously it trumps everything, because those buildings are designed for the school, that's why they're built, but when school's not in session, we have to be able to, um, welcome, I, I would say, but I'm gonna recluse myself during this vote, so I'm not on the vote, but I would say we want to be welcoming as much, um, health and wellness in, for our community members as we can be and supporting our rec departments at the same time, so any youth, youth programming that happens in these towns. This is such a big conversation, so it's not even just like something we can have on the school committee alone, we need like so many key players here, we need the police to weigh in, we need, you know, um, Dan's way in, we need the principal's way in, we need the rec department, we need the basketball programs, maybe even the PTO, anyone that's gonna utilize that space, we need to put all these players at the table to have this shared use agreement conversation, because it does become a legal document at that point. And there's, you know, there's liabilities, I know basketball carries their own insurance, the school has their own insurance, everyone has their own insurance, but there's a lot of steps to go through to get to that final point, um, and a lot of conversations to be had. So I guess on Tuesday, we're going to, I don't even, I don't even know what we're doing Tuesday.
Tuesday, I think we're just gonna, Tuesday, we'd need to get a waiver through. Yeah. We need to get a waiver passed, so that Julie doesn't, the basketball program doesn't have to absorb the full cost of custodians. Because they cannot afford it. But I think the bigger question is, like, kind of what we talked about at our workshop is, does this committee need to work on these leases and/or a shared use agreement, would it fall into with a lease, would it be a separate agreement? And I agree Julie, like this is a bigger conversation, um, I'm wondering if we plan ahead and pick a meeting like that this subcommittee has, and we invite Kim and we invite, uh, maybe not Kim ahead, right away. But you would know the parks and rec people from your community, the parks and rec people from our community and, and kind of, um, I mean, we need to hammer out these leases, and we, we know that, right, that we need to figure this out, we need the town administrators involved, so in my mind, that falls under this subcommittee. But that's like a huge undertaking, so Nancy, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Couple of questions. So if you go for the waiver, so, so you don't have to pay the cost of the custodians, if I'm understanding correctly, who pays the cost of the custodians?
It wouldn't be a waiver of cost, it would be just to have custodians come in to open the building and close the building, so it would be three hours a day instead of eight hours a day.
So that would still be paid, the three hours would be paid.
I should have worded it, a waiver of the, and maybe Julie, you want to word it like this for the motion, we should, um, to waive or to waive the poli- this specific policy for Berlin, so that.
To align with Boylston, right.
We only require a custodian for three hours per weekend day.
Is this for all schools?
Well, in Boylston, we already only have a custodian for three hours, because Boylston has Hillside, they have a rec facility.
And what about Tejano?
Tejano is, Tejano is a different story, because I feel like it's not a rec facility.
Yeah.
I think that too, Dan, Dan, would you speak to that, I, I think they've had historically the custodian that is there the whole time, I, I'm not sure, I just want to make sure we know that.
Well, I know last year, um, they rented it out, the basketball program, and, uh, we had a custodian there the whole time.
Who funded, I wonder who funded that, was that a Boylston program though, or Berlin or both or?
I believe it was a Boylston.
It's a combination, it's a travel basketball program that runs Berlin, Boylston, West Boylston towns.
And do we know who pa- who paid for the custodian out of that, so do you, because do you share that Julie, that cost of that?
So the travel basketball program is its own separate organization, it's just comprised of kids in our district. Right, so there's six, yeah, there's sixty kids that play in that, on those teams, and oh gosh, seventy percent of those kids are Berlin, Boylston kids.
So I guess what we want to know Nancy and or Dan, both of you, to find out how, how that custodian was funded then, because it sounds like the custodian was there at full time, right?
Through facility use.
Yeah.
Say that again?
Through the revolving account. It was paid, I, I, it didn't come out of the general budget, I know that much. It was paid out of the revolving, whether.
But it was paid to the, to the t- to the district?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but at Tejano, there's school programming on the weekends, so the school probably pays for a custodian to be there on the weekends.
Not out of the general budget, it, it's somehow it's funded into the facility rental, somebody, one of these programs is paying for it. And it's paid from that, you can't pay it out of the general budget, because it's not for educational purposes, so they're not getting paid.
These are your school teams Nancy, that practice on the weekends, your junior varsity or varsity.
You're still not paying for it out of the general budget.
That's not a bit athletic?
No. I, I would have to look into that.
So let me, let me just speak to this, so if it's in a school event, uh, school basketball teams, more custodians are there.
Right.
This is the school event. If it's a Tejano sports team, we don't need a custodian, could coaches have access to the school?
Because they're employees.
They're employees and it's a school related event.
Okay, Dan, that makes sense, so I'm wondering if these event, if last year, like people were just getting in, because coaches were there doing school events and it was kind of like, oh, the door's open, because we have practiced this morning here, I'll leave, if somebody like left the door open or, I don't know, but.
And then. I can look into it.
Yeah, and it's, because how did, do the travel team pay or not pay, I, I, I don't, we don't have the answer to that, I don't know.
Right, no one knows what happened at Tejano last year.
I, I'll find out.
Okay, thanks. So I think for Tuesday, Julie's gonna like give a five minute update. I feel like we've reached a resolution where she's gonna at, request the committee require three hours for Berlin, right?
Yep.
Boylston is fine, because it's already three hours of custodial, uh, custodial time, and Boylston doesn't have programming on Sunday. Tejano? I don't know, I'm so confused now.
Yeah, let's find it, we'll have to find out.
Yeah, we gotta find out.
Like right now?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna meet next week, right, so we'll, I think we were talking about looking into a couple of these things to follow up on, right, for the scheduling and so on, if we wanted to.
Yeah, but if Julie, if Julie wants to make a mo- if we need to, so I guess then the motion should just be the, the vote on Tuesday night should just be for Berlin basketball, for Berlin, for the Berlin facility, I'm sorry. I don't want to show.
Is shared use agreement on the agenda?
So you're la- I put you last on the agenda, just to, um, oh, let me see what, how I worded it, can't even remember, give me one moment, I've got like fifteen things open. Okay.
But this is a good, this is a good conversation to start, because there are so many moving parts with the shared use agreement, there's so many involved parties.
Yeah, so Julie, I have you as number nine on the agenda after the MCAS update, as the shared use of facilities policy discussion. And I have it to be led or just opened up by you, so I figured you'd give like a five minute, just explain the situation, because I don't know if anyone else knows, and then I also have a business item, so that we do have a vote on there.
Okay.
And the way we have it worded is approval of facilities policy waiver for Berlin vote.
Okay.
So I do have that on there.
Perfect.
Where we do have that on there. So I, yeah, I think that covers us.
I think it would be helpful to Nicole, if, if you haven't done that already, to put the policy in the, in the, um, drive and the shared use agreement in the drive, so that the committee could go back to reference that as they needed to or look at it ahead of time, so that they have a background themselves in that way, so if you could put that in today as well.
So yeah, Julie, I figure if you get the conversation started, then we can kind of like put it out there, like, there's multiple parts here, right, like, you need this waiver for this season, because your program, the Berlin youth basketball cannot pay for a custodian for sixteen hours a weekend, so here's your proposed solution for that. That's issue number one, issue number two is, moving forward, is this a sustainable solu- solution, are we just gonna keep doing this? Or does the committee want to like formally change this policy? Or does the committee want to start talking about, you know, we just started discussing leases, should some, this be part of these leases that we have with the towns, should this even, you know, and then who should be, should custodians be in the building, if there's people outside of this, that, you know, outside of the, to Dan's point, outside of, that are not employees that are using the building, do we need custodians there, do we need, just need people to open and close, do we need the doors locked? I feel like all of this is gonna kind of come from that discussion, and I think it's just an initial discussion to get us started, and then the way I plan to kind of close that out is it's gonna get kicked back to the subcommittee, because we have to talk about this with the towns. We have to get the facilities director, which is Nancy and Dan, to weigh in on this, we have to get the superintendent to weigh in on this. And at the end of the day, the committee's gonna have to vote, and oh, by the way, it's gonna end up getting kicked back to policy. So Mike and Laurie are gonna have to, you know, if we need to draft a policy, we're gonna need to get Kim involved, this is not gonna be like a.
I know, it's big, it's big.
Yeah, we're not just gonna solve this in thirty minutes at the school committee meeting, but we need to start these difficult conversations, so it's on people's radar, and we need to kind of like put a loose plan in place, like, okay, on our next facilities meeting, we'll plan to work on this lease, or we'll plan to, you know, do this or whatever, and at their next policy meeting, they can plan to review that policy and see what MASC best practices, has that changed, what are other schools doing, um, that kind of stuff, but I think it's gonna be all hands on deck for something like this, but I agree, like, it's just been back of the envelope for too long, Jeff being like, you got a key, you got a key, you got a key, I mean, I remember Jeff saying to me, he was gonna get me a key, and then he was gone.
And every, and everybody's kind of doing, it's a really good, I think the product of all this is gonna be huge for us to everybody.
Yes.
It's a lot of work, a lot of stuff and feelings about and emotions, but I think it's gonna be really healthy for us, and it ties right into that safety and security piece that we're speaking so strongly to. Even the SRO, if we get an SRO in place, if that does, I mean, getting an SRO in place is great during the school day, but what about the rest of the time, we want children, our children in our schools to always feel safe, and our families all times, right, in the school building as much as we possibly can, and I think that that's our ultimate goal with it, so, so really healthy. I like the idea of bringing in more stakeholders to the conversation and having those meetings going forward, well, you're right Megan, we can't solve it in thirty, thirty minutes.
No.
And at a meeting, but for now, this is just the, the ask, the immediate ask for Berlin, I think, and then same is a larger piece. Julie, you wanted to find out the process, the invoicing process, you wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Yeah, Nancy, if you could just, how, how are the, um, janitorial invoices coming to the basketball program, are they being mailed out, is it a bi-weekly thing or is it a weekly thing? You can't hear? Oh. Megan, can you hear me? Megan, can you hear me?
Yes.
I hear you now.
I can too.
I heard you say I can't hear.
She wants to know about the invoices, invoices for the basketball program?
Yeah.
When you invoice the custodial, uh, payment.
What's the process for it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know. I can find out. I don't, I don't know the, like, the timeline.
Yeah, just, so, so I know on my end, you know, I, I'll just need invoices, obviously, to pay this person. Um, and I just wanna know hours worked, just, you know, I don't know how you do that generally with staff. But for our bank records, we'll just need all that.
Yeah, see, so usually it's done by a rental by rental basis. So it's something, I mean, we can, we can figure out that works for you and we're you know what I mean? Cause we're not gonna do it by a rental by rental basis, because you'll be cutting a check every two checks a week. You know, so we can maybe work it out on a bi-weekly basis or a monthly basis, whatever works for you. And yeah, we'll give you back up with the hour, you know, for every, if, if it gets approved, for every rental, you get paid. You know, we'll charge you three hours for the custodian.
Right. I have no problem paying weekly, so that these people can get paid. Weekly, because I think that's important. Um, that's no problem. We can definitely do that on our end. We just need to have, um, invoices for that, that's all.
Oh, yeah, we could do that. We do that.
Perfect. Oh, yeah, that's what I hear.
Yeah, so I mean, we can give you weekly invoicing.
Yeah, that's totally fine. So these people can get paid. That's important. Um, and that will be mailed to our PO box. Is that how you generate?
Want me to send it? We'll send it.
Yep, you can, can you send invoices electronically?
Sure.
Okay, yeah, we can do it electronically. I'll send you the basketball email, and I can go right through that. And then, do you, do you have thus far, obviously you have the hours worked thus far per individual?
Um, have you worked with Cheryl, Cheryl at all, Dan, on that?
Yeah, they punched in and punched out.
They have?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, yeah, we do.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Alright, so then, yeah, just submit those over.
Have you been, you haven't been billed anything yet? Is that?
No, not that I've seen.
Okay. Alright.
But I wouldn't even know, I, I mean, I don't know where it's going.
Julie, Julie, so I feel like you understand that the district is gonna pay these custodian salary or their pay, their paycheck. So they're getting paid no matter what. And then the district is gonna bill you back.
Right.
That's how this is gonna work. You're not paying the custodians directly.
No, I didn't know that. Okay, thank you.
That's what I thought. I was like, listening to you talk, and I'm like, I don't think she gets it. So you're gonna pay the district. So the bill will come from the BBRSD. Like, for the facility use. And the, the detail on the invoice will say custodial fees, and maybe they'll show you the breakdown of the hours and the names of the people that worked. But you're actually paying the district. So there, when they're, if they're punching in on their clock, they're just gonna get paid through payroll. Like Lisa Crochane is gonna pay those custodians that worked for their overtime on the appropriate date when they get their paycheck.
Okay.
They have to do that. You can't pay them. They're employees of the district. You have to pay the district.
Okay.
And then so great, they're charging you, is they're just charging you the reimbursement rate. They could charge, you, they could, the district could say, oh, we charge, you know, five hundred dollars a day. We charge fifty dollars a day. The district is just looking to get reimbursed. So that's why they're passing, they're just passing the cost to you. That's why it's confusing.
No, that sounds fine, as long as I can see hours worked on that invoice. Just so, that's great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then, Dan, I had one more question for you. So on Sunday, for that group that's in there, you do have one of your coaches coaching also there. Your Tohoto coaches.
Okay.
That make sense?
It does make sense.
Okay, so I know how you said if it's, there's no custodian necessary, if it's a Tohoto coach, is this that situation, or is that, this is different?
So it's a different
Guys, there's so much here to unpack.
It is.
Because it's an entirely different team. So what we're, we had a situation with another employee who is also been doing something similar with a whole separate outside of the school, outside of the, the district team. Um, and has, because they have access to the building, you know, they, they're running a program, also it's separate. So I think that this is part of that larger discussion, even if the, I don't, I think, I'll just leave it there. I think it's part of a larger discussion, that even if you're an employee, if you're running something separate from school team, i- is that custodian waived as well for that situation? You know, that's, I think that's what we're trying to figure out. You know, how does that work?
Okay.
My understanding is just, okay, this is, the person's a Tohoto coach, but is he coaching Tohoto sport? Or is he coaching? That's the thing.
Right.
Right.
He's count, he's, right, correct, yep. He's coaching district kids, but he's not coaching the, well, at, on this Sunday, he's not coaching Tohoto sport. Correct. Okay.
Yeah, so that's part of that bigger discussion, I think, too.
Okay. Yeah, oh my gosh, so much. Alright, so yeah, we have some work to do.
Alright.
And I did, I did, I will say, I did ask Kristen, if would she put the lease agreement over to council, if she would include the shared use agreement, so that they could review that. And she said that she would.
Excellent.
So at least it's starting.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, Julie. I, I wrote that down too, because I was gonna call her and ask her where they're at with that, so.
Okay, good, yeah. Perfect, alright.
Talked to her already about it recently, so I don't, should I call her or no?
Sure, no, it was just a quick through email. I, I know she was sending the lease over to council, legal council, and I had asked if before it went over, if she could include, so they could take a look, a shared use agreement for that, when the school's not in session for those community spaces. And she said she would.
Great.
And that's all I know, so far.
Okay.
I don't know what's happening in Boylston with April and a agreement, but.
I heard anything about that.
Not, I don't think Boylston has done anything.
Okay.
So Julie, are you good with what is gonna happen on Tuesday? I think you're gonna start the conversation. Both you and I kinda know the details, so we can
Yep.
I'll definitely try to keep everyone on track, but I wanna hear everyone's opinion. And then, the business item, and we'll mention it, the vote is just to get us through the season. But the committee at the end of the day has to decide, do we send this back to policy, like what are we gonna do for the long-term solution?
Correct, yeah.
But the short-term solution would be just be like the waiver, so, um, I, I can take stab at word. I'm gonna like type some stuff up for the meeting, so I can take a stab at like wording a motion, if you wanna like take a, I'll email, I can like email it to you, like what the motion should be.
Yeah, we'll figure this out, yeah.
You have to recuse yourself from the vote, so I don't think you can make the motion.
Oh, right, yes, you're right. Yeah, I will be involved.
Yeah, I'll take a stab at like wording the motion. Um, I don't think it's a big deal. I think it's just a motion to waive, um, full day custo, or to change the, the requirement for custodian for Berlin from all day to three hours, or from the length of the event to three hour maximum for Berlin, for basketball season. Cause we don't want it to, um, like, if somebody comes in in the spring and they wanna use the gym for something else, we want the district to be able to do what they, they need to do for that.
For right now, yes.
Right now, yep. And then, when we get this shared use agreement, I do, I, I completely agree. We need to like
Right.
Be more, especially because Berlin does not have a rec facility. We need to collaborate more. We need to have, you know, space for kids to do activities in the winter.
Even senior groups too. Seniors, we don't have a senior center in Berlin either.
Yeah.
That's a great use of that facility, if they wanted to play cheer volleyball, or do pickleball indoors, or something that's gonna promote their health and wellness too, or yoga in there, you know, it's, we need to have that for them too.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, so that's great. I feel good. This is great. Great conversation. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Alright, so is there anything else? Uh, so next meeting, when do we want? So, obviously, we have the holidays coming up. We're meeting with Berlin next week. So I'm thinking down the road, January. Do we wanna meet maybe the second week in January?
So, I plan, in our January meeting, I plan to, we haven't done a year-to-date budget review, so I don't know if you guys would want to re, review that to make our meeting shorter for school committee.
Yes. Yep, so the school committee meeting's put at nine?
Yeah, nine.
So we should try to aim for Friday, January fifth?
Yeah.
Unless Michigan, the University of Michigan wins some football thing, because then Matt is insistent that we're all going to to watch the fun. Just kidding, I probably won't go. Alright, so we'll plan for Friday, January fifth, at ten thirty again?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Nicole, could you please send out and, and thank you so much. Um, alright, so then I'd like to have, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, wait, before we do that, can you also just, if we're gonna meet with FinCom, right? Can we post that meeting too?
Julie, we only need to post that if we have quorum.
I know, but I would just post it, and you can cancel it if need be, but I would post it just in case somebody says, cause what's today, Friday? Oh, wait, when is it?
It's the thirteenth, it's Wednesday, so you're right. It would need to be, but like
Yeah, we gotta move on it. I mean, you have till Monday, you have Monday.
But what do we post, though? I don't even know what to, I've never done that before, so I don't know what to do.
Yeah, you would just post a school committee meeting for where it is. It's gonna be at the, at the town offices with the finance committee from Berlin. Oh my god, she's so cute.
Say hi.
Let's clarify that day too. I, I, I don't know why I'm
Alright, so here's this, here's what I'll do. I'll email, I'm gonna, when we get off this call, I'm gonna email Nicole, I'll CC you, Carol, Nancy, and Jewel. I'll put all of us on the email, um, except for you, Dan, no, no offense.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
So I will, um, email all, all of them and ask, um, the date, the agenda, and the location. And then, once we get that, Nicole, maybe like Monday, you can put an agenda, like, it would be just like, I know what you're saying, like, how we had it for the budget forum, an agenda like that. And that, that way in case, do you still have the agenda from the budget forum? So it would just be like that, and it would just say, you know, discussion with Ber, um, it would be, um, discussion with Berlin FinCom.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So let me email them first, so we have all of our information. And then, yeah, I, I guess it doesn't, there's no harm in doing that.
Right.
Yeah.
And yeah, you're right, Julie. So Nicole, you can do it Monday, anytime during the day, because the meeting's not till Wednesday night.
Uh, unless it's Tuesday.
If it's Tuesday, we can't go, Carol. So that point is null and void, because I'm not gonna run from, um, they know we've had a, we've had that, that school committee meeting. I can't commit that we're gonna be done that by seven o'clock, so we can get to, um, to Berlin by seven thirty. Do you know what I mean? Stop.
Yeah, we'll, we, yeah, let's find out for sure. Alrighty.
Alright, so I'll send them an email. Alright.
Perfect. Alright, thanks, everyone.
Everyone have a wonderful Friday. Thank, oh, wait, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I got so moved.
Alright, and second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Awesome.